Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, fellow board members, faculty, staff, and families. Item 10 in our agenda, unscheduled audience participation, is an opportunity for individuals to speak and have five minutes to share some thoughts with me and the board members. If there's anybody here desiring to do that this evening, Angela, where will you find the cards?
Over by Mrs. Quinn.
All right, right over there, there will be some cards if you're choosing to do that. Fill one of those out here earlier on in the meeting so that we can get them to Angela and then she'll get them to me. Other than that, Secretary Stepek, would you please take attendance?
Certain. President Donnelly.
I'm here.
Vice President Brazington.
Here.
Secretary Stepek's here. Treasurer Guthrie.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Schaefer.
Here.
Trustee Delisandro.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Stepek. Changes the board agenda, board members, I'm looking for a motion. The Tim in the cabinet would like to update us on the property purchase, and so I'm looking for a motion to add an agenda item to Board of Education Matters to discuss the property purchase. Dan?
Move to add item 5A, property purchase to the agenda.
Is there a second? Mr. Bailey, second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have before you also a 3A and 3B consent agenda. Would someone like to take that motion, please?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Mr. Stepek, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Prearranged request to address the board. We have a Lakeville presentation.
So, thank you so much for being here tonight, giving us the honor of hosting a board meeting. We're super excited that you're here. Before we start our brief presentation, I'd like to say a few thank yous. I'd like to first and foremost say thank you to all of the amazing Lakeville staff members who are here. Yay. I also like to say thank you to some of our parents that have come out in support tonight. I'd also like to thank PAWS for making a guest appearance. PAWS is our newly adopted, very own Lakeville mascot, so we don't have to share him with anybody, and the students named him back before the holidays, so his name was PAWS. I very much like to thank Ms. Amy Duvan and Lauren Palowski for making the Be Amazing Star ornament that you're all receiving tonight.
Thank you.
We hope you never see for the year. Also to our art teacher, Ms. Sky Koffey, she did a nice display of student art behind you, so thank you for that. And before I begin our short presentation, I'd also like to thank Ms. Morin and Mr. Kay for their participation in tonight's presentation as well. Okay, so, thank you. So, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to turn a little bit. I apologize. So, many months ago, when I was meeting with Mr. Weaver, it was suggested that we present to you the Ruler Approach to Social and Emotional Learning. This is a program that Lakeville began last year, and more staff members are being trained, and we're continuing the program this year. The Ruler Approach to Social and Emotional Learning really helps us help students learn by addressing their emotional needs. The program showed over time, the research shows, that classrooms with more positive emotional climates typically have students that exhibit greater leadership skills, are less likely to engage in bully-like behavior, promote positive peer relations, have quality relationships, not just with their classroom teacher, but among all staff members, that they are more attentive, more engaged in their learning, and typically perform better The Ruler Approach actually came from Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. Psychologists and practitioners started this program, and the focus is on helping educators and students develop five key skills, which are recognizing emotions in themselves and others, understanding the causes and consequences of emotions, labeling emotions accurately, expressing emotions appropriately, and regulating emotions effectively throughout the course of the day. The Mood Meter is a tool used in the Ruler Approach, and at this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Courtney Morin. She is going to walk you through how she uses the Mood Meter in her classroom.
Good evening. Checking in and being self-aware is really important. It is important for our students to monitor their mood so they can learn at their full potential. When our students come to us each day unhappy or perhaps angry, they will not be ready to think and approach themselves as a learner to what we're learning that day at school. Looking over here is the Mood Meter, and I just want to draw your attention that there's four different quadrants. The blue quadrant, sad, you see calm, mad, and brave. Research shows that our feelings have a huge influence on our decision-making, but we are often unaware of how our feelings are influencing what we do and what we say. This Mood Meter is designed to help us learn to recognize emotions in ourselves and others, and it's really important because it gives us that common language that we can talk with one another about our feelings. Okay, so, in my third grade classroom, this is what a Mood Meter check-in would look like. It happens throughout the day when the kids first arrive. The learners check in throughout the day, especially the hotspot times, you know, after lunch and recess, when I haven't seen them in a bit. It's really important that we check in so that they are self-aware of their own feelings and mood. Okay, so, learners, we've been talking all about the Mood Meter, and we've been talking right about how important it is to know like how we're feeling and where we're at, and what color we are. So, I want us to do our quick check-in for today, and think about right now, reflect about yourself as a learner and as a person, where would you put yourself on your Mood Meter? So, I invite you to take out your dry erase markers. Go ahead and do that now. Look at your Mood Meter. If you don't have one, go ahead and borrow your partner's. And I invite you to think about, what color are you in right now? Like, how are you feeling as a person, as a learner? But then I'm gonna push your thinking a little bit more. I want you to reflect, can you like pinpoint in the color a certain word that you're feeling? So, I just wanna push your thinking a little bit more. Can you think within that color, what word would most accurately describe how you're In about three seconds, be ready. Two, one. Okay, now I want to invite you to go ahead and take a chance to turn and talk with your partner about what color or what word were you able to pick. So, show us how we turn. Let's go ahead and try to turn, show us, tell me how you turn, and go ahead and share. What did you guys pick and why? So, you can see through the Mood Meter, every day, we're showing how to be self-aware of where we're at, so we know how to approach different decision-making skills moving forward. I want to definitely just make clear that this is only one example of how students check in on the Mood Meter on a daily basis. There's some different ways that we use, so that in a kindergarten classroom, it works well for kindergartners all the way up to fifth grade, and some different ways is that we have group Mood Meters, where students have different magnets, maybe with their emojis on it, or with their faces, and they can move as a whole large group Mood Meter up on a bulletin board.
Yep, in one classroom, I've seen them be Pooh Bear, or Tigger, or Eeyore, and they check in about, I'm Tigger today, I'm Eeyore today, so that's kinda fun, too. And Mr. Kay is going to give you a few words about what staff and students are reporting as a result of the use of the Mood Meter here at Lakeville.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kevin. Mr. Kay is the students call me. I'm the school liaison here. I'm just gonna talk really briefly on the impact of the Mood Meter and what it's had for our school. So, I talked to several teachers, staff members last week, and I heard a lot of the same common thoughts among everyone. The Mood Meter is just a really simple tool, but it provides a common language for our entire school. So, the kindergartners use it, and use it all the way through fifth grade, so it's become a part of the daily routine, and it's just really easy for us to use. It helps us as a staff address the emotional needs for our students, it helps our students express themselves better, they're working with their partners and their peers and their staff members, creating better working relationships, and it just, as a staff, it helps us better understand our students, so we understand their experiences, their stories, their emotions, and it helps us, once we get to know them a little better, develop strategies or create resources for them, so that we can help them be successful here at Lakeville. Talking to the students, I heard a lot of the same thing, you know, they said it's cool, it's fun, they really enjoy it. They like that they have the option to share or not to share, so we never force it on them. If they wanna pass, that's okay, we give them that right. So, if they wanna share, they have the option to share to the class. And I noticed that it's helping them develop a sense of empathy, so if they notice a student that's having a rough time or struggling, they're thinking to themselves, like, how can I help this student? How can I kinda pick them up, cheer them up? So, it's building a sense of empathy and community in our classrooms, so I think that's really important, and I think it's a great benefit for our school.
Okay, thank you. And that's it? Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think we need Mood Meters at board meetings.
I'll just go see, I know a lot of adult settings that confuse us.
Yes, maybe, maybe next year.
So, Lakeville Nation, thank you for coming out tonight. It's awesome to see all your faces. You are more than welcome to stay for the remaining portion of our board meeting, but if you have other things that you need to get done, we recognize that, please help yourself to any of the snacks, but you're more than welcome to stay or go, it's totally up to you, but we appreciate you coming tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
That's our slogan next year, Lakeville Nation.
Fellow board members, back to our agenda, we're on item 5, and based on the motion previously made, we're gonna have an update on the property purchase.
So, Sam and I attended a conference call this morning with Gordon, our attorney, and a couple other individuals, and I think I'll just go through this email, and this'll just sort of give you an update on where we're at. Our due diligence has proceeded as quickly as possible, the title commitment has been revised, and several exceptions have been removed. Phase 1 environmental audit will be completed by December 27th. The parties have agreed on new location for the water and sanitary sewer easements. The ALTA survey has been completed, and the township has informally reviewed and approved the new locations of the easements. The parties require additional time to permit the seller to remove the remaining title exceptions. I don't know if you guys noticed or not, but on that piece of property, there was a number of exceptions. I wanna say maybe like five or seven, or something like that, and it is our goal to have all of those removed. We don't want any exceptions on that land, so that basically the district can do whatever with the land, whatever it sees fit down the road. And so, we've been successful in removing most of those exceptions at this point. The township engineer is to review and approve the new location of the easements. We need to draft legal descriptions for the new easements and documents to discharge the old easements, and drafting and review of the detention agreement and other due diligence matters. In order to accomplish this, it's basically the recommendation of Gordon, our lawyer, as well as Central Office, to amend our sale agreement, which basically just extends that agreement to January 31st of 2019. Just to sort of recap where we are, the purchase prices stayed the same, $500,000. We have incurred and will continue to incur the regular due diligence cost, and that's for the work described above, whether it's attorney fees, engineering fees, filing fees, all that kinda stuff. If we were to estimate just total what those fees in totality look like, we're probably somewhere around 20, no more than $25,000 in total, okay? The only potential additional cost that the board could see is that because it's now going into the new year, there would be taxes on the property. In checking, the taxes are no more than $6,000. I have asked Gordon to, basically ask the sellers to pay for that. All right?
What'd they say?
Well, we don't know. We just had a conference call this morning, all right? Do I expect them to come back and say, no, we're not paying anything, the district's gotta pick up the tab? No. Do I expect them to come back and say, yeah, okay, we both are trying, let's just split it? That's probably most likely what's gonna happen. So, I just, I wanna be upfront and let you guys know that, and that's sort of where we're at, and so unless I hear anything different, I'm gonna go ahead and execute the agreement that extends that offer of purchase to January 31st, but I wanted to give you an update.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Bailey?
Is there anything that we would have to re-vote on or re-change, or does all this?
Nope.
Stay as is?
Stays as is so far. Dan?
You had talked about exceptions. When we get into the exceptions, we're obviously have no intention of building something that falls outside of the township requirements. Zoning requirements. I just, I don't wanna get to the point where, oh yeah, we could do this, and all of a sudden, we fall back into that. We wanna build a four-story building somewhere down the road. I just, I wanna make sure that we don't get into that position where we're now, we've gone through all this, we've made the purchase, and we're battling the township for the zoning. I just, I just wanted to throw that out there, make sure that we're thinking forward.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
I know this, we've talked about this multiple meetings, but can you please remind our constituency and the board what fund this is coming out of? This might be a question for Mr. Barna.
Yep, so this is all coming out of the general fund, both are, both the purchase, the $500,000, as well as the fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Other than we just gave away their strategic negotiation to OCTV.
I think you're good. They might, they're probably watching.
They're not watching? All right.
Maybe we can get OCTV to delay post.
Delay posting, all of a sudden, video, fax, something, one minute was cut out, I don't know what happened.
The secret tapes.
It's the tapes.
Rather take our chances and get some backlash, so something was missing off of the tapes.
Yeah, no kidding. All right, anything else under Board of Education Matters? That's it?
None.
All right, moving on, curriculum and instruction, Mr. Weaver.
Nothing tonight. Whoa, whoa, no, no, no. Merry Christmas.
Heather wants to be entertained and engaged. Heather needs to be entertained and engaged, come on. Well, Mr. Barna, then you have to make up for that, and it looks like you are.
Yes.
So, Mr. Barna, what do you have for us?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I just simply have the low bidder list that we presented last week. There has been a slight change of the one, one of the bidders for flooring and resilient tile. We decided to go with the other quote, which was for MasterCraft Flooring, because they were the lowest bidder when it came to all of the actual flooring at Leonard that was supposed to be in the original bid, and so we are adding in MasterCraft Flooring as opposed to the previous bidder that we mentioned last week, and that would take care of all of the resilient flooring and carpeting, more specifically, at Leonard Elementary after the ventilation is done, or I should say, the AC is done next summer. So, that was the only change that we had, everything else stayed the same.
All right, would someone like to put that motion on the floor? Dan?
Sure.
I thought you raised your hand.
No, I got, I got out in front of myself a little bit, but I know. I got it, Mr. President. I can handle it.
Okay, please.
Thank you. I know he's, he still hasn't decided if he's sticking around or not.
Well, that's it.
He's worn a tie, though, so.
Yeah.
I got you.
Please.
I move to approve the suggested bidders for the Series 1 Bond Spring/Summer 2019 Construction Projects. Suggested bidders include: Blue Star Inc., Great Lakes Welding, City Contracting Services, Royal Roofing Company Inc., Pontiac Ceiling and Partition, MasterCraft Flooring, and Conti Corporation.
All right, is there support? Ms. Guthrie? Discussion? Dan?
All right. So, you had mentioned that we changed out, we changed out the MasterCraft Flooring to cover Leonard, was that missed by the other, or was it a revision of the RFP?
Yeah, sure.
Walk me through that process.
That's a great, yeah, great question. That bid by Shack Brothers, which was the other company who bid on this, was actually, they had that as an alternate, and if you incorporate their alternate with their base bid, it's $10,000 higher to incorporate the carpeting at Leonard, which again is what we originally intended.
Okay, so, MasterCraft Flooring had it in their bid?
Correct.
The other one had it as an alternate?
So, I'm sorry, just to touch on that, it was an alternate. It was an alternate for the carpeting in the classrooms at Leonard, and with the alternate, Shack Brothers was $10,000 higher. My recommendation last time didn't include adding that alternate, but the district informed me they'd like to accept that alternate, and I made MasterCraft lower.
Okay. Fair enough. I just wanted to make sure that I understood.
Sure.
Yeah, well, it's a fantastic question.
It's written.
And just for further clarity, this carpeting is in every one of the rooms, you know, the classrooms, and because the vertical, the ventilation units that are being swapped out requires that carpeting be replaced in those areas, in all of the, in all of the rooms. So, that's what we're specifically talking about here.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir?
Just, and I know I'd asked it before, but some of these are quite a bit lower than the rest of the competitors, but we've checked out the quality and the warranties and, you know, the, I know the best price isn't always the best value, but, I mean, some of these are pretty good deal.
Yeah, so, we've worked, our construction companies work with most of these contractors, we've had post-it interviews with them, we've actually gone through the scopes, gone through the drawings, and at this point, I mean, they've agreed that their bid covers everything, so they can't offer anything less than what's in the drawings and specifications. So, the warranty that's in the specifications, you will get, so.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Pass, you have a few things.
Yes, just a few. So, we were very pleased to bring to you a recommendation for action on our bargaining agreements with all four of our bargaining groups who've been working over the last couple of months to reach these agreements, and so these are extensions, these were wage reopeners, and so they're extensions of the current contract through 2022. And so, due to some of the language and editorial changes, what we're presenting to you is essentially 2019 through 2022. So, the current contract, which was, which was planned to go through 2020, that will then expire, these will take their place upon your approval this evening. So, happy to answer any questions you might have regarding these proposals of the contracts were in your packet.
And?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank them for all the light reading.
Yeah, no kidding, right? And so, we're gonna deal with each of these separately in motions? Is that how, how I see it seems to be worded?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right, please.
Move to approve the tentative agreement between the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1472, AFSCME, and Axford Community Schools for the period of September 1st, 2019, to August 31st, 2022, as presented.
Is there support? Ms. Guthrie, support, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Schaefer, you wanna keep going?
Sure. Approval of the OAA tentative agreement of November 27, 2018. Oh, sorry. Move to approve the tentative agreement between the Axford Administrators Association, the OAA, and Axford Community Schools for the period of August 1st, 2019, through July 31st, 2022.
Is there support? Mr. Bailey, support, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You're on a roll.
Okay. Move to approve the tentative agreement between the Axford Education Association, the OEA, and Axford Community Schools for the period of September 1st, 2019, through August 31st, 2022, as presented.
Is there support? Ms. Guthrie, support, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to approve the tentative agreement between the Oxford Educational Support Personnel Association, the OESPA, and Axford Community Schools for the period of July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2022, as presented.
Support? Dan? Support? Discussion?
Quick question.
Yes?
Excuse me. I just noticed that all of these have different termination dates.
Right.
Months-wise. Does that make a difference, like, if it's in August, that August 31st, that's into the next school year?
Yes, and so, some of these agreements, those were existing timelines that were in the current agreement, so, you know, we stuck to those. Some of them align with the work years for the majority of those employees in that, in that group, you know, and also, it also, you know, because all the bargaining groups expire in the same year, you know, at least from my perspective, provides more appropriate timelines and some degree of working with each of those bargaining groups as well, so.
Okay.
Are they all gonna get on the same loop now, or no?
No, they're all, they're all tiered slightly, in terms of their expiration, their expiration dates, all within a couple months.
Any other discussion? I simply wanna say what great work. There's a lot of great work, and to have something extend out another year, beautiful Ready for a vote? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
No, I'd just like to say that, you know, it's great to go do some great things for the employees, and certainly it's a byproduct of the great work that this board is doing, and these folks in the district, and, you know, it's really just been amazing working with all these employees and these bargaining groups. Great group of people, and I'm happy we're able to adopt these contracts.
And in just a broad way, 'cause I think I may have heard, or we may have heard even in the last meeting, but as they went and re-ratified these contracts, what were those vote percentages like? and re-gratified these contracts, what were those vote percentages like?
I believe it was across all four contracts, there were five no votes across all contracts.
That's startling. That is just amazing.
So.
Great job. It sure does. Great job.
Thank you.
Student services?
Nothing from student services.
Whoa. Any white cards? Unscheduled audience participation?
Festive miracle.
Wow. How high is that chair, man?
I'm just saying.
Don't hit it now.
Hit my chin on the table while knocking out.
All right. If there's no unscheduled audience participation, any clarifications?
None needed.
All right. You have scheduled events and final board comments. Jenny?
You can start with me, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say to my fellow board members that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you, and thank you so much. I really wanted to take some time and go back and look through all of our agendas and look for, you know, everything that we've accomplished together. And I still don't feel like it would do justice to the group, the work that we do, the importance of this, you know, not just this board, but the Board of Education for this district. And I think it's fantastic that we were able to work together so well. And I just am so, feeling so privileged to have been part of that. So, thank you to each and everyone. I feel like those who are coming on to the board are going to be fantastic, and that we're leaving them in great hands. And I'm going to stop there, because I have nothing on Dr. Brazington and Mr. Steppich when it comes to retiring. So, and all they've accomplished is part of this board. So, I would just want to do some thanking to everyone for our terrific experience.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Bailey?
I want to echo what Jenny said. I appreciate being on the board and working with you guys and what I've learned, and hope to continue that. I want to thank Lakeville for hosting this, and especially for these ornaments. This does mean a lot. The one we received last year is on our tree. This one will go right next to it. It really does mean a lot. So, thank you. I love the ruler meter. I really would like to hear a follow-up on the success of that down the road and, you know, what the outcome of... I see that is being huge. So, great job with that. Great job with Sam with all the construction. It sounds like it's going to be a busy summer, and I can't wait to see the kids when they come into school the first day and see the new schools that we're putting up and the contracts. We really have some great, great team members here in Oxford. To be able to give them a little thank you, it's an honor to be part of that.
Very good. Dan?
Echo what Jenny said and what Corey said. Thank you for the ornament. I'm glad you pointed out it was an ornament, because I had a really small lunch, and I thought it was great. I almost got after it, so.
Don't eat the hook.
But thank you. Please thank the staff for staying. I know it's been a long day. Some came back, but, you know, Jenny said it earlier. We've accomplished a lot as a board. And not just on paper, and not just with the people, but as a board. I really do believe that anytime you have a new group and, you know, it takes some time to get to know each other. But I think with this board, everybody came to the table with the same goal, the same intentions of, let's all figure out what we're going to do, even though we bring different perspectives. What can we do together that benefits the district as a whole? And I say, I would say, over the last four years, we've done that. We've been very successful with it. And that the proof is exactly what David gave us today. We've approved some contracts, and we've given back to those who have given so much to us, and that's our staff. And I'll say it again, I said it 100 times. You know, we do everything for our staff and our students. If the student goes to school, if the staff member is happy with what they do, and they feel valued, and they come to work every day trying to provide the best education that we can provide them, that trickles down to the student. The student gets the best education that we can provide to them here in our district. And they take it home, and their parents are seeing those results. And that's what we're here to do. We're here to set the tone. We're here to provide the opportunities and the finances to do so. And I'm just proud that we've been able to do it as a board together. I just want to thank Mark. Mark, we go back quite a long time, and I'm going to miss you being here and, you know, kind of keeping everybody on the legalese side and making sure that, you know, and reminding us all seriously how important it is to go to the classes and get educated, because we learn so much. And it might not be the book stuff that we learn, but we go outside of the district and we see how respected Oxford is and how we operate. And so, that's, I'm going to miss that. And Joyce, I'm going to miss you as far as, you know, you don't always agree with somebody, right? But you find, like I said earlier, a common ground, and you build a level of respect for people that you work with. And I can honestly say that I gained a lot of respect, and it's been a pleasure getting to work with you.
Thank you.
And everybody, Jenny, you know, I'm going to miss you as well. As they say, you're one tough cookie. And I appreciate you staying. See you in a minute.
Thank you.
That's all.
Mr. Shaefer?
Oh, well, a lot of good came about this meeting. Thank you, David, for working through all of this. The agreements take a lot of time and a lot of work, and there's a reason that there was only five no's. And I'm sure that your presentation was a big part of that to them. So, thank you very much for taking the time to do all that and work through all that. And to my retiree board members, so, you guys really will be missed. So, I appreciate you sticking it out, Jenny. I think that that was, you've had a lot of health issues, and it's difficult. So, I didn't just, you know, come on this board in a business role, but I made friends, and I appreciate you guys, all your time and all your effort. And Joyce, I've learned a lot from you.
Thank you.
I always listen to what you have to say entirely, because I think you have wisdom, and you've brought a lot of that to this board, and I think that's fantastic. So, and Mark, you're... I'll still see you at the football games, I'm sure. Get behind, but, you know, you give a lot of your time, too, in the ski club and the athletic boosters. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather, thank you. Mr. Steppich?
Thank you. Sometimes I give long speeches. Sometimes I give real short ones. I got a feeling tonight's going to, as time went on here, it got longer and longer. So, bear with me. It's my last one. Very mixed emotions tonight. I loved being a part of this board. And quite frankly, Joyce, we went through hell and high water for a lot of issues, didn't we? And Danny were there for that, too. And we battled through quite a bit, and we came together. Haven't always been on the same side on issues, but we worked through stuff. And in that, I feel sincerely that I've developed friendships, you know. When Tom came on the board, my whole, my whole life changed, quite frankly. And Tom's a big part of that, and just a great person. And you did a phenomenal job leading the board this year. Better than I could have. And that's hard for me to say. I did run a pretty quick meeting once.
On record.
Yeah. So, I think back to, you know, to some of the things that we accomplished with some of the programs that we've added, some of the libraries that we've added, the equipment that we've added, and it just goes on and on and on. And the beauty of that, it's easy for us to shine as a board when we have such talented people that are doing the day-to-day, starting with this man right here. When we brought him in, that was by far the best decision that we made, because he just came in with his feet running as fast as they could, and he hasn't stopped yet. And he has a team together that is just phenomenal. And so, you have something like, you know, 99.5% acceptance rates. That's, Dave, that's incredible. And that's because of this unit that we've put together here. And so, then, you know, I start thinking of other things along the ways. And there's been disagreements, you know, the international program. I was a huge advocate of, and I'd like to see it built back up again. But the biggest thing that I learned as being a school board member, besides learning how to be a school board member, because I don't know about any of you, but when I came on this board, I didn't know what it was all about. It's a whole different ballgame. And when you learn that, and you learn to operate within that arena, there's so much stuff that you can do. And what I learned the second, besides that, the biggest thing that I learned was going to these conferences and talking with other school board members from all over the state. And so many people from so many corners of our state or areas of our state know about Oxford. "Oh, yeah, you guys were doing this. You guys, how did you do that?" And it's because here, we're pioneers. And sometimes when you're a pioneer, you can't tell whether you're supposed to be your right or be your left, and you make a mistake. But you keep plowing forward, and I feel that's what we do. And for some reason, we keep going down the right path. Because the discussions that would happen in all of these classrooms that I took, and I took a lot of them, was what do we cut next? What program, what school do we close next? We have never had that conversation at this table. And that's phenomenal, because everywhere else, and I mean everywhere in the state, from Detroit to Menominee, everybody's having those discussions. And part of the reason is, birth rates are down. You can't hide that. So, what do you got to do? You got to reinvent yourself. You got to think outside the box. You got to come up with these other programs, the online programs, the international programs, whatever. And we're always at the forefront of that here in Oxford. And people across the state know it. Go through those classes. Mary, go take as many as you can. And I know you did. I heard about it, yeah.
We did, we did.
Yes, I know. I know. But the more you can do, the better. I mean, I took days off work to go to these things. And it's awesome. And I just, my daughter, who just got accepted to ASU for next year, which is where my son's graduating this year, and she was, she's joining the teaching college there. So, maybe she'll have a place to come back to teach. So, I'm pretty excited about that. So, I'm real sad that it's coming to an end here. I want to thank Joyce for being with me the whole way here. And even though we weren't together on several topics, we worked together. And so, thank you. Jen, it's been great working with you. Dan, you and I, we're not done. And Tom, for sure, you and I aren't done. But, so the rest of you guys, you'll still see my face around for a while. Still going to be the president of the boosters. I love that. And we're doing real well. Got a great team working there. I love the skiing and the snowboarding, so I'm going to stick around for a while doing that. So, you'll see my face. I may pop in at a school board meeting. Love you all. It's a great day to be a wildcat.
Should you fill out your white card when you come?
We got five minutes?
Five minutes.
Sorry for the long one, guys.
Dr. Brazington?
Oh, gosh. I just wanted to say a few things. Other than when I went away to college, I've been a part of Oxford Schools since 1968. I was four years old when I went to Daniel Oxford as a kindergartner. I can remember those days. I've got wonderful memories of being a student, a parent, a teacher, a counselor, administrator, and a board member. I'm just so proud that my own kids got a good education from Oxford Schools. Just been wonderful. I was humbled by the overwhelming support I was given in the election in November of 2013, when I received the most votes out of a field of nine candidates. The campaign was contentious, and it was clear I was running because I did not believe our students were receiving resources they needed. Staff was working in a culture where fear was prevalent, and the school district and the relationship with the community could only be described as hostile. Members of this board have made significant changes the past four years. A new superintendent, the reallocation and refocus of funds going into our classrooms, the rightsizing of our international program are just a few things we've accomplished for our community, for our students, and for our staff. Without new leadership to this board, we would have a Chinese dormitory that would house 200-plus students going to our high school right now. We would still have a part-time superintendent, and there'd be no TMO, and our employees would be fearful of losing their jobs. Not a place to work, not a place to learn. And I am just so pleased that together, we had a lot of 6-1 votes in the beginning. Then they came 5-2, then they were 4-3, then pretty soon, Dan was voting with me. I was like, oh, my God, it's Dan. I'm so happy he joined the other side.
Dan's always on the side of staff and students.
Absolutely. So, but together, we have just grown so much, and I am just so pleased with the new leadership that's coming on in the board in January, and our cabinet leadership, and just the staff that we've hired. And the students are the benefit of all of our hard work here as a board.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to say how exciting it is. Lakeville, you rock. I loved the ruler approach presentation, and I'm serious. There are adult settings that that should be taught. As someone who counsels adults, you're not just teaching these kids an academic skill. You're teaching them a life skill. You're teaching them how to succeed in a marriage, how to succeed in a business, how to succeed when someone's angry with you. Boy, to train someone, an adult, to do a check-in is, would be an amazing thing. So, I commend you for that, because you're... I love to see that we are teaching life skills, right? That take you beyond the academics. That speech for itself. I already spoke to the contracts and the fact that five no votes, and we now have a contract that goes an extension of another year. That's just amazing. Finally starting to spend some money and get some stuff done. All the hard work and getting all that stuff done. Thank you, thank you, thank you. To those board members that are leaving, I know that we all get into this for the big money. But the fact is, the only reason why we ever do this is because we want to make a difference. And I don't, I guess what I want to tell all three of you is, you didn't just make a difference because you attended meetings. You made a lasting difference. Jenny, you know, a few people beside me know all that you've gone through this year. And the dignity, the grace by which you did it, sticking in, not wanting to leave the board position, you know, whether you needed to be assisted into a room, you were wanting to be here. And that kind of determination and drive will stay with me. Will stay with me. Mr. Steppich, I think you bleed blue and gold. Just the mere fact that you leave this board and are still involved in three or four other events proves that you're just kind of an all-in spirit. And that's contagious. This idea, I mean, I'm starting to go to football games and all sorts of stuff now, because I just got to be there. I mean, it's, and I don't have kids in it either, and, but I'm taking that with me. I'm taking that with me, that this has to be in your system, because then if it's in your system, you care about it, right? Dr. Brazington, the ability to look at a budget or hear a presentation and quickly be... The ability to look at a budget or hear a presentation and quickly be able to disseminate where it's falling. As a business guy, I'm thankful that you've taught me to keep asking the question, where does this land in the classroom? Where does this help a teacher do what a teacher needs to do? Where does this help a student get where they need to be? And that will go with me. So I want the three of you to know that you've made a lasting impression on me. You're up.
All right. Kristen, thank you for having Lakeville Nation come out. I think that maybe you've already talked with Mrs. Weaver because about 2:00 today, she came around the corner, she looked at me, and she said, "Do I need to go get you some lunch because you better not go to that board meeting hungry tonight?" I think she's already applying the social emotional rules with me. So I appreciate that. Yes, I am very appreciative for our entire board, and so, actually, I think I'm going to stand up here.
All right. All right.
So, on behalf of Oxford Community Schools, our employees and our students, we want to say thank you to Dr. Joyce Brazington, Mr. Mark Steppich, and Mrs. Jenny Guthrie. Thank you for your time, dedication, and commitment to our community, schools, and district. Your unique perspectives and passion for serving our community will always be appreciated. Please feel free to come back and join us anytime. We now have a small token that President Donnelly has given to you. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. So it's a plaque that has their name, years of service, a little saying, and that's printed on like a piece of metal. And you either can hang it on the wall, or you also have a little stand in there that you can also put on your desk.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Everybody's signing. Thank you, guys. Very nice. Thank you all.
That's all I have. That's all you have? It's all we have. It's a great day to be a Wildcat. This meeting is adjourned.